Thanks, Don.
All right, good evening and welcome to the March 28th, 2022 regular scheduled school committee meeting. Time is 6:00 PM and I will call this meeting to order. As a reminder, if anyone is audio or videotaping this session, please let us know. If no one in attendance here and anyone in the online audience is recording, can you just raise your hand so we are aware? And no one has raised their hand there, so if we could rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, start with Rocco. Beth, do you want to start first?
Yep, Elizabeth Marshall Boucher.
Bill Fonseca.
Darachionne.
Pamela Blair, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Antonella Rochilla.
Gregory Thompson.
Kathy Salatary, corn secretary.
Ann Gordon.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent of Schools, attending remotely this evening.
Thank you. We have some minutes to approve. The first are the executive session meeting minutes.
Move to approve the March 14th, exec 2022 executive session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Bill.
Second.
Second by Antonella. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay, and abstained. So that's 4-0-1. I was not there on that particular session. Next set of meeting minutes. I move to approve the March 14th, 2022 regular session meeting minutes. Motion made by Antonella.
A second.
Second by Beth. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carried, opposed, and that motion carries 5 to 0. Committee and subcommittee communications. Right, you want to start?
I certainly would. You leave last weekend, the magnificent gala. Want to certainly acknowledge a nice evening and the work of the committee. And certainly all the grants that were awarded to the schools, to the teachers, for the students. It was a really nice event, so I just wanted to acknowledge that. Others were there. And that's about it. Thank you.
I was just going to talk about the.
You should, because you're the ref. Sorry.
No, tell them what Cal Caster said about the amount of the grants.
Um, I believe he said around 30,000.
Going forward.
60, 60.
Yeah.
Oh, that they were upping it.
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
That's great.
Yeah, that they were able to give more money. So, but we raised a good amount of money to thank all the parents and supporters of Islam little public schools with the live auction and the raffle tickets and it did, it did take a lot of work to put it all together, but it came out really nice.
Yes.
I would just echo the sentiments, Bill. Anything else?
Well, good.
We had a meeting with the MSBA for the Designer Selection Committee. So the three, three schools moved, I mean, three designers moved forward and next week the MSBA and our three representatives will be meeting again with, with the MSBA for interviews for those three designers. So we're happy with the three, the three picks. They were all great, but we're happy with the three that we got, so.
Good.
Yep.
Thanks for the exit. Now we have an opportunity for any visitors to address the committee. Lisa Dagnoli, looks like she has her hand up. If you would, am I bringing her in, Don?
Can you hear me?
Yes, Lisa, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good things. If you could just state your name and your address and just as a reminder, we have about three minutes to speak directly to us. And just as a reminder, we don't necessarily answer questions. Just a time for you to kind of share your thoughts with us.
Okay, um, yeah, Lisa Dagnoli. I live at 256 Millbrook Drive and I'm a mother of three kids in the Islamic middle schools. I have a daughter in sixth grade at Berchland, a daughter in fourth grade at Mountain View and a son in second grade at Meadowbrook. Um, so just a couple of things. I'll try to be brief, but I just wanted to first thank you for giving the parents, the kids in the Islamic middle schools a choice on being masked and unmasked. I really think it's so important to our kids and our power of choice as Americans. So thank you from our family to all of yours. And I think I just, you know, I've kind of been waiting to hear something on, I guess, the lunches and recesses for the younger kids. I have two younger kids that are at Meadowbrook and Mountain View. And my son, who is at Meadowbrook, is currently, well, since September, he's been eating his lunch alone at his desk in his classroom. He's never been in the cafeteria. And he doesn't socialize, so there's little or no socializing. And he can only play at recess with his individual classroom kids of about 20 kids. He's not allowed to play with kids at recess from other classes or other grades or anything like that. And again, that's from the mouth of an eight-year-old, so you know, if anybody needs to correct me, they can. And my daughter that's in the fourth grade at Mountain View, she's eating in the lunchroom with a movie on and that's been since September as well. There's no talking when the movie's on. It's a silent lunch since September. She sits alone in an assigned seat, not alone, I shouldn't say, she sits in a assigned seat. And I guess like all the kids in the classroom are paired up, but she's kind of paired up with another classroom and obviously since she can't socialize outside really the classroom, she doesn't know any of them. So she's basically sitting alone at lunch and not talking to anyone since September. So I think this is what they call, you know, lunch loneliness and, you know, it's like lonely even talking about it. I think you'd agree. So, you know, I kind of just been waiting to hear that, okay, you know, I know the high school's back to eating and socializing at lunch. I know that Berchland kind of went to, three kids can eat together and they're going towards the normalcy. But I, I just can't figure out why the younger kids, it's still, you know, pretty stringent. And if anybody needs, I think, some socializing, it's those kids that, you know, my, my son's been in the COVID mode since kindergarten. So he's, it's been hard to meet other kids and it's a struggle for everyone. But I think it's harder for those kids that have started the school with no socializing. So, you know, I'm not trying to complain. I'm just asking you guys, you know, like kids are playing sports together, they're on buses, they're not wearing masks. You know, us adults are going out to dinner together. The town released the mask mandates and that distancing. And most everything, you know, is more of a choice now, I would say, for adults and I guess the older kids. But can, I'm asking, I guess, you guys, can you help get the younger kids back to having a lunch where they can talk and socialize and getting to a recess where they can run around and play with whoever they want to play with? And just, you know, that sense of, I guess, being normal, some sort of normalcy for them. So, you know, that's it. I just, you know, wanted to bring it up. I didn't even know if you guys are aware of it. But I'm hoping that you can kind of take what I said and maybe just consider it.
Thank you, Lisa. Thanks for bringing that back to our attention. I know at one point last academic year, we did ask Gordon to bring forward the policies relative to recess and lunch, so maybe that's something we can ask Gordon to do.
Yeah.
Again.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else in the audience, the virtual audience, that is looking to address the committee tonight? If so, can you raise your hand? Doesn't look like there's anybody else at this time, so thank you again, Lisa. And we'll move forward with our agenda. What brings us to Gordon and an update on the selection of designer for ELHS School Project feasibility study?
Sorry about that, Ms. Smith.
Oh, no worries, no worries. So similar to what Mrs. Marjorie Boucher said, we have recently narrowed down to three. But let me take you a few steps back in the designer selection process. We've been working with Skanska, who is our owner, project manager. And back in January, we put together a request for services that was reviewed and accepted by the Mass School Building Authority. Then we advertised at the end of January. In February, on the 8th, we had design firms and architectural firms come to the high school and tour the high school and get a briefing of sorts from Skanska and ask their questions as they toured the high school. Same tour that we gave a few years back to the Mass School Building Authority officials when they came and visited. And then February 23rd, the proposals were due. On the 23rd, we received eight proposals from very reputable design firms, architectural firms. And we, as a district group, met on March 9th to review those proposals. Mrs. Marjorie Boucher was part of that design review committee. And we went through them. We became knowledgeable of all eight. All eight are able to do the job. Then on the 22nd, just last week, we met with the Mass School Building Authority in a public meeting where what they called it was their design selection panel. There were three individuals representing the district. Mr. Crucial, who's the chair of the School Building Committee. Mrs. Marjorie Boucher, who both represents the school committee and the school building committee and myself as superintendent. And the Mass School Building Authority puts together a group of 13 individuals, some of whom work for the Mass School Building Authority, some of whom are giving of their time and work in the industry as an architect or a designer or an engineer. And we then again reviewed all eight proposals and went through one by one each proposal, commented on it. And then at the end, went through a process of weighted voting. And the top three firms were selected to interview on April 5th. So that's where we are in the process. April 5th will not only be interviews, it again will be with the Mass School Building Authority panel. So the interviews will all be structured and set through that open meeting that the Mass School Building Authority will put together for us. Hopefully at the end of that meeting, we will have selected a design firm. And then we'll be moving forward into the actual feasibility study where the design firm will take over and really start to dig in and get to look at the high school and look at how we solve the many different challenges and put together a proposal that not only has potential visions for either a comprehensive renovation, a new building or a renovation in addition, something within those three options, but also will have costs that are connected to each of those. And also during that whole process, be bringing in focus groups from the community to make sure that this truly is a community project and looks at how we can best serve our students as well as the community at large. So it's an exciting, exciting time. We're getting close to really moving in and step forward in this whole process.
Very good.
Thanks, Gordon. Thanks, Beth, for the work.
Thank you.
Yep. As it relates to the movement with the MSBA, so thank you for that. Next, we have the program of studies at the high school and an update on scheduling. So I think, Mr. Mackey, we're looking for Mr. Page and Mr. Wright. Okay.
Hey, Mr. Smith, we're hearing wind. If you have paper on your, uh, if you're going to be getting a lot of text messages. Oh, sorry.
I will mute myself unless I need to speak, so no, you're not hearing paper. Sorry.
All right. We're starting Frank.
Yes, hi Frank.
Hey, Frank.
How are we doing, everybody?
We're doing.
Hi.
Um, so I think, thank you guys for having me tonight. I do want to start just by going through some tweaks I like to make to the program of studies, hoping for your approval. The first one that I wanted to go through is more of a cleanup on something we probably should have done a few years back when we updated our GPA, I'm sorry, updated our GPA to align to the recommended college board GPA. So I know you have this memo, but I think just for the people at home, it's probably good to share out and just talk through a little bit in terms of what we're looking to do. So am I able to share my screen?
Give me one second. Yes. Okay, go ahead.
All right. Oh, hold on. It does not seem to be letting me.
Good times. Takes a second, so. Turn it back on again. All right, try it again.
All right, I'll give it one more shot. Uh, still not happening. That's okay. I can just start going through it and, you know, I know you guys have it and if we have questions, obviously feel free to ask. So the first thing I wanted to update was in the program of studies on page 26, there's some language that talks about the required course load for all full-time students. Now, the original language read as all full-time students will be required to take 32 credits per year, at least 20 credits from courses selected from under the weighted rank. That's one piece of this I want to change. And then ninth graders are advised to take only one course per academic discipline during their first year of high school. Any of the following may substitute for a fourth or fifth weighted course. And there's a number of courses listed there. And that's the second piece I'd like to change where it talks about accounting, art, instrumental music, chorus, child development, et cetera. So what I was hoping to do is take that original language and revise it to all full-time students will be required to take 32 credits per year with at least 16 credits selected from mathematics, science, English, social studies, or classical and modern language departments. So that original language that we had in there was connected to when we used to weight all of our, our core academic areas. So math, science, English, those areas under our standard honors and AP courses all carried a weighted rank to them. When we converted our GPA down to the recommended college board GPA, we stopped weighting our standard level courses and put them down to a four-o scale. So that language, obviously, now it doesn't apply to any of our standard level courses, so it's a little bit outdated. So what I'm looking to do is eliminate that language around weighted courses and just align it to courses from what we call those core academic departments of math, science, English, social studies, or classical and modern languages. The second piece, which I'm looking to just clean up a little bit, is it talks about students carrying 20 credits from those selected courses, but then there's a whole list of exceptions, which can get a little bit confusing for some of our students, especially because some of those courses on that list no longer run. And what I was looking to do is just make it a nice clean 16 credits, which would be basically at least a minimum of four out of their eight courses would come from those core academics. Most kids carry five, but they would have to have at least that minimum of four. Part of this also allows us to align with our, our CTEC students where obviously half of their day that they, they take at East Long Metal High School and the other half of the day they go to CTEC. When they're only here for half of the day, they would only be able to take those four courses. So it would allow us to, you know, implement that policy with more fidelity. So that's the first, the first piece for, for tonight. Now, I'm not sure how you guys are looking to do this. We're going to vote by each piece that I go through, or is it just an overall of the document?
We do roll document, Frank.
Okay.
Well, for now, but what if, I mean, I'm fine with that, but what if there's something we don't know?
Wait, then you bring it up into the.
Yeah, but before we do it.
Yeah.
All right.
Ken, we have any questions for Frank?
Frank, if we, if we change from the, the 20 to the 16, it doesn't in practice change the final required credits to graduate, correct?
No, it's not changing the final required credits. Kids still carry 32 credits per year. The, um, the only change would be the number of courses from those core academic areas, but it would eliminate all of those exceptions, which can be a little confusing, especially with some of those exceptions no longer, no longer being offered.
So, but conceivably, they could be required to take four less of the selected courses than they do now throughout their four years. Four classes less.
Yeah.
Yeah.
From, from the core academics. It just, it's really just setting the minimum from the core is really what we're looking at.
Yeah, but we still have to take four years of English and four years of math. Then I think it's two years of language and.
But right now we're requiring to take 20 credits per year in these cores. And we're organizing, gonna make them take 16 credits per year in these courses. So in theory, that's four less of these courses required.
Firing them to take.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Through the year.
Yeah. We're not looking to change any of the, of the graduation requirements connected to, you know, math, science, English, social studies. Those are all going to stay intact. We're not looking to change the overall credits that students have to carry per year, the number of credits they need for graduation. It's more just that language per course load, which, like I said, it does allow us to do other parts of our program with more fidelity, like with our CTEC students where we've already been making exceptions for those kids in order to attend, attend CTEC and also my hope is to just eliminate some of those exceptions that are listed under, under that original language, talking that through with some of our counselors, especially with some of our ones who have been with the school for a while. It's been hard to identify the exact rhyme or reason to why some of those courses were on that list. I'm sure there's a history there that predates me. But obviously, if we're explaining to a family, you know, why the, why those courses count as exceptions, it's we don't have a great answer at the moment, so I'm hoping to clean that piece up as well.
And those exceptions wouldn't be weighted anyways. You know, like if they threw in, if one of their exceptions was health seminar, it's not going to be weighted either.
No, it would not be.
Sarah, if you must have tried screen sharing again.
Frank, do you want to try screen sharing one more time? Don thinks he may have gotten it to work.
I don't know.
Maybe.
While Frank's doing that, I would just offer that what it seems to be is that you're actually opening up more options for students because the weighted piece, I think, as Mrs. Marjorie Boucher just pointed out, is no longer there. And so the ones that are in the original language after the colon, they're no longer really exceptions. They are, they are just other options. So it opens up options for students that they can take to fill out the 32 credits that they need per year.
So Don is going to, is telling me to quit and then reopen Zoom, which is going to boot me out.
Yeah, so that's up to you, but I've done what I could do on my end at the moment.
Okay.
You may want to do that because you have another presentation, which you're going to be, you have slides for.
Okay.
Frank, I can, I can share both. I have the memo. It's the memo that you need to share right now, right?
Yes.
Yeah, you should try. So why don't you try sharing Heather, so see? Yeah, there we go.
There it is.
Thanks, Heather.
Thank you, Heather. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Okay, any other questions for, for Paige, relatives of that first part?
So the full-time students, then, they would be able to take more electives than core classes? If they chose, they could still take a fifth?
Yep. And they would still be required to meet all of our graduation requirements. None of those are changing at all.
There was another piece to this too, Frank.
Yeah, so the second piece as part of this presentation is just talk through some, so two new course offerings that we would like to bring forward this year. And then a tweak to, of course, already in the program of studies that we brought this change to school committee. I think it was four or five years ago, and we're looking to revert back to some of the original language. We feel it's just more appropriate for, for our juniors and seniors. I'll get to that one when we talk about it, but just to go through the, the next one that I would like to talk about in our course offerings comes from the English department. I'm not sure if Mr. Sharon is here. Don, I'm not sure if you're able to pull Nick Sharon in.
Yeah. On his way.
Oh, there we go. Uh, so the, the next, the first course I'm going to talk through tonight is Advanced, it's AP Seminar. It's a course that we're looking to offer to our sophomores. Obviously, it's like our classes, we've been talking about it, it's going to be a full-year course. And I'm just going to, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sharon to talk a little bit about what that course entails. He is going to be the person who's going to be teaching our, our AP Seminar to our sophomores next year, assuming this course gets approved this evening. So Mr. Sharon, I'm going to let you take it away.
All right, thank you, Frank. Hello, everybody. As you see in front of you, this is basically a copy and paste from the College Board's website that kind of describes what AP Seminar is in their, kind of their mind. Anyone who's on the committee who's familiar with the, the old senior project would be kind of familiar with what AP Seminar is doing. It's really founded in, they're using an inquiry framework to learn about and discuss different issues or different texts while also learning how to look at an issue or a text through different lenses. And then ultimately, in the end, choose some kind of topic and then really dive into research and looking at that topic through those lenses and present to a panel, both individually, one project and then also as a project as part of a team to basically build their, part of their AP score. And at the end of the, at the end of the year, they would, of course, take the AP exam altogether.
Can I ask what kind of a AP exam would it be on exactly? So, so the, so you as the teacher would score part of it and give that, send that to the AP, the College Board? And then the kids would take their test. I'm just curious, what would be on that test?
Yeah, so the, the score that they would receive, that, that zero through four or five score would essentially come from three places. During the year, I would be in charge of scoring projects, the two projects that they do. And there is a percentage of the entire score that they have assigned to that. I believe it's approximately 35 to 40%. And then during the AP testing window in May, they would take a, an exam that is provided by the College Board, which would essentially be, here's a, here's a piece to read and then given some kind of argumentation to present about that piece or a position or stance to take. And they would have to defend that stance based on the materials provided to them.
It's pretty new, right? I've never heard of it before.
Yeah, the program has only been around since about 2015 and I think 2015 was even a, not an official year. They were piloting the program about then.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Would this class take the place of their English 10 class?
Yes. Yes, yes.
Okay. And then is the hope that they get into AP for grade 11, the kids that are taking this class?
So there is a next component of the AP Seminar called AP Research, which we're not looking to offer yet. But our hope is to offer that AP Research course, which Seminar is setting the foundation for. And that's really a course where the kids take on a self-driven project and, you know, the skills that they've learned in the AP Seminar course, they apply to that research where they're really, it's a very self-directed program that we're. If this obviously works out as successful, we'd be looking to take that next step, which would also potentially set us up for the, the, the AP or the College Board, the capstone diploma certificate, which we'd like to explore that as well. Is it part of that seminar and research class meets the criteria of the capstone for the, for the College Board?
I'm hearing, I'm happy you guys are starting it. I'm hearing, I'm happy you guys are starting it because I, you know, knew the capstone was coming up and that. I'm happy you're trying this.
They would get AP credits for this class, right?
Yep.
And if they took the one in grade eleven, if that was to move forward, would that also be the same type of scoring where part of it is classroom-based performance of projects? And then they take an additional exam?
That is my understanding. Yeah, we, I haven't, I'll be honest, I haven't dug too much into the research yet. Yeah, we, we did want to start here, but that, that is my understanding of that piece. Our English students would still also have the opportunity to take AP Lang, which is traditionally an eleventh grade English course as well. So they'd have a couple of different options there.
Other questions about the AP Seminar?
Okay.
One more?
Yep, and thank you, Mr. Sharon. Unless you guys have more questions for him, I'm gonna kick him loose.
For sharing, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the, the next course in the Program of Studies that I'm, I'm hoping to offer next year, it's a, it's ninth and tenth grade course. We're calling it High School Foundations. It is a class that was inspired by a program that's, that's run over at Minutewalk, so I do want to give a shout out to them. But High School Foundations, it's a course for freshmen sophomores that focuses on students reading, writing, research, and executive functioning skills. Students will engage in group work, class discussion, self-reflection, while, while practicing academic skills required of them during their four years of high school. They will also work on executive functioning skills of planning, time management, and organization. Students will also complete work on their four-year plan as outlined at the beginning of the ELHS Program of Studies. At the end of the course, students will be able to improve their writing skills, research effectively, and have the foundational skills that set them up for success over the rest, rest of their high school careers. This is a four-credit pass or fail course. We did identify the curriculum that we're looking to use for the executive functioning component of, of the course. It's called the SMARTs Curriculum. It's run through the Research Institute for Learning and Development, which is based out, I believe it's in Natick, Mass. And also per a great recommendation from Ms. Trullio, we're also looking to embed some, some digital literacy and computer science standards as well. We're looking to use some, some Google tools to work on those, with those students who would be taking this course.
Now, this is for just the students that you have, are you gonna like pinpoint kids who you think are best suited for this in terms of just getting them up to where we want them to be, or will you open it up to all the students?
We've opened it up to all ninth and tenth graders. It is in our course offerings for this year. We did put language in there pending approval of school committee. I believe we have about a hundred requests so far.
So this is an elective?
Yes.
Is there any particular professional development that the educator, educators would be still seeing this course would be in need of in terms of being able to actualize the SMARTs curriculum or even the DLCS standards?
So the, the person who I, I'm looking to teach the majority of these courses, it's, it's our high school librarian, it's Mr. Dan Myers. Him and I and Mr. Macarini, who's our Career Center Counselor, we're looking at writing the curriculum for this course. But we haven't really gotten into that conversation yet about professional development that they might attend, but I'm, I'm all for ideas. You know, if there's anything you might recommend that you think would, would help along with that. But right now, the three of us are digging in and we're mapping out the scope and sequence of how the course would run.
Why is it only pass/fail? What's the reasoning behind that?
So just because it's a foundations course and foundations course, and we are trying to work on making sure those kids have those foundational skills. We did want to look through that lens of, you know, it's not something that we're looking at as high stake, but making sure that they get the, the support and skills that are needed and make it more or less about the grades and more about building those skills.
So are they getting four credits when they take it in grade nine and four credits when they take it in grade ten?
If a student were to take it two years, that, that would be the case. It would probably be, it'd probably be a one-year course that most students would take it as, not necessarily two.
Would it be written in that way then, like under where it says grade, like should say nine or ten, like that kind of?
Yeah. We, we could do that. That's typically if, in the rest of our program of studies, it's, we have it written that way for like which students are eligible. So it'll be eleven comma twelve for eleventh and twelfth graders.
Okay. Kind of like if they take a social studies class, it might be offered in ninth and tenth grade, and they're not gonna take it twice. They're gonna take it in ninth and then, so there's always been the comma there.
Whatever fits.
Yeah. Get an eleventh, you know, but you could take it.
But is this a full-year course too?
Yes, yeah, full-year course.
I just, I feel like it's weird that you're getting four credits for this class, but then you're also getting four credits for the Advanced Placement Seminar class as well. And one of them's pass/fail, and the other one, I feel like it's a lot harder a class.
But they're gonna get five credits for the AP that will boost their their GPA, whereas these, this isn't gonna touch their kid's GPA at all, right?
Yeah, yep.
But they're still getting four graduation credits.
So, so all of the classes, all the classes that we offer that, that are graded have a four-credit weight to them.
But this one's not graded.
Is this the only class that you offer that ever for pass/fail?
No, no, we do offer other courses that are pass/fail as well.
And can we have an example of those?
Independent studies would fit that criteria.
Why do, why are you choosing to do pass/fail instead of giving them a grade?
So again, the, the idea for this one is just to focus on building those foundational skills. I'll, I'll say if you guys would prefer us to make it a graded course, I'm not opposed to that. But really where my mind went to for this one was making sure that it was more of a skill-building course and to really focus on that piece.
If you have a student, like I know I'm fine with that, but if you have a student that, for instance, has signed up for this class and you feel that based on what you've heard from Birchland, that there may be, it might be too easy for them, would you sway them away? I mean, I think that this is nice for kids who might struggle coming in. But if you've got a student who's not necessarily gonna be struggling coming in and they're signing up for this, are you gonna push this on them, or do you think that you might redirect?
So I, I think those are conversations for our counselors to have with the students based on, you know, other courses that they're taking. You know, what their needs might be. It's probably gonna be more individual, individual conversations than, you know, just taking that that wide lens of like the stereotypical kid who might be in this. I can see any of our students benefiting from this course, you know, from, from those honors kids down to the standard.
Thank you.
So beyond independent studies, to go back to Aunt Snell's original question, beyond independent study, are there any other courses that students are getting four credits for that are pass/fail?
Ah, God. I, I'd have to go back and, and look in our Program of Studies to list them. I don't have them all memorized off the top of my head. We don't have a lot of them. But there are, there are a few that are out there.
I just wanted to answer the professional development question. The SMARTs curriculum does offer professional development for delivering that curriculum. And then the Google Applied Digital Skills are already created adaptable lessons through Google on, on utilizing different tools for, but applying them as in, in the title, and they also offer professional development.
Are those opportunities that we would be able to take advantage of? Are those things that we would be needing to secure funding for? Or are they?
I think the SMARTs PD is part of the, the package. If not, it would be, wouldn't, and then the Google Applied Digital Skills, those are usually fairly affordable if it's, we're just sending one or two people.
Thank you, Heather. Aunt Snell, you seem like you're deeply thought about that. Well, I just feel like there's, I don't know if like all the details are really ironed out exactly, like what you had said, Beth. Whoever wants to take it can take it instead of looking at maybe some students' data and being like, all right, maybe you should take this because they need more support in closing those gaps and helping them get ready for their other, their other classes. And I mean, receiving four credits for this, just how, like their ELA class or their math class. I don't, and I don't know if that's equal. But it also being like a pass/fail course, and then these other kids are getting grades.
Well, I think the time of the class itself, the time in minutes would justify the four credits, right? Because that's, that's pace alone to get through, you know, thirty-two. The pass/fail is a separate issue for me at least. And I understand your point about that. So Gordon, did you have any thoughts on the pass/fail portion of it?
I, well, I think that the pass/fail, as someone mentioned, one, it's not contributing to the grade point average, if I'm correct, Frank. And if you're comparing it to, say, honors and AP courses, they carry a higher weight in the GPA and certainly on a transcript will be looked at differently in the college admissions process.
I was just comparing it to any, either, even like regular ELA classes too, I mean, because they still get four credits and it's, I don't feel like it's the same. You're asking the students to do the same amount of work, I guess.
Does, do you pass/fail or do they grade?
That one I, I don't have an answer to.
I don't know. Is it, is it, you're just feeling like you don't want to put that pressure on the kids?
Yeah. That, that was, that was more where, where I was going with it is I see it as something where we're looking to build those skills, give those kids that foundation for high school. So that's more where we went with that lens of, of going pass/fail. You know, but that's also, I'm not married to a pass/fail model. I'd be, I'd be fine with leaving it as a graded course as well and, and, and taking that approach. You know.
I mean, should we let them see how the year goes with it? And then like next, you know, it's kind of new. It's not really experimental because I know you, you have a prototype you're going off of and see how it is they would be grading if they were to grade these kids through the year. And then next year, come back and, and think about that, you know, as kind of like a, just a trial run.
Or do you do it the other way and add the grades?
The grading and let's see if.
The only thing, especially because a majority, I would imagine, Frank, of the students will take this class at some point. So it certainly is precedent-setting to go to pass/fail where we don't really have that precedent in other places. So if grading is not a high hurdle, then that seems to make sense, right? And then if we, perhaps if you find that it creates a burden on the students, then maybe we revisit it.
And go the opposite.
Go the opposite way. If it's not, I, but you know, without us overthinking it, Frank, or micromanaging it. So your finally, your final thought on that?
Hey, I, I'm fine with having it as a graded course. The, the only area where I, I want to say it's going to be like a factor, but it would, it would factor in. So obviously would not count towards our, our weighted GPA. So what goes on in transcripts are only the, the weighted GPAs from our core academic areas. So this would never factor into that, whether it was graded or pass/failed, doesn't make a difference there. However, in our, when it comes to our athletics, all of those teams, when, when it comes to participation or eligibility, every grade that kid gets on the report card, it's factored into that GPA. So if we did go with a graded course here, whatever grade they're receiving at report card time would be factored in for their eligibility purposes, but it's you know, that doesn't necessarily mean it's a bad thing. It could be a good thing for a kid who's struggling and needs that extra bump for support, you know, if they're, if they're doing well in their foundations course.
How do you feel about that?
I think we should, we should try it with the grades.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you guys are okay with it.
I see both sides, but if you want to start with grading, it's fine. And then Frank, you agree with the four credits. That's basically because of the time in class, right? That's, that's same as every other.
Yeah, four credits is strictly connected to the time of the course. That's, that's right, Greg. Yeah. So it's basically just saying that's the same amount of time that all of our other courses run at.
Yeah, yep.
Do you, do we have any half-year courses, Frank? Like electives or, or they all?
So right now, because we're, we're currently in the block schedule due to the pandemic, all of our courses are half-year courses. But we don't have any, if you mean like a two-credit, we, we don't have any two-credit offerings right now.
So I'm, I'm on Program Studies because we, we talked about this in two thousand and sixteen, and I'm gonna ask again. Can all of the weighted classes please be designated somehow so when moms open up the book or the whatever, they see it really nice and they know?
Yeah, definitely. I, I have no problem adding that. Add that information to our Program of Studies. I, I think it's good information to have. We used to have.
Why maybe? You know, like an explanation of why some are weighted and some are. I know that would be helpful to people.
Yeah, and really what the weighted means is that is what's factored into your GPA that you bring, you, you bring with you to your college application process. So so yes, I think that makes a lot of sense. We used to have that in the Program of Studies where we had the GPA one, GPA two. And that was prior to us making that conversion to the new College Board recommended GPA system that we're using. But I think it, I think it still warrants at least designating for families so they understand which ones are being factored into their students' GPAs, which courses are and which ones aren't.
Okay, thank you. And the other thing that we had discussed, and I just kind of want to say it out loud. Looking at some of the weighted English classes or whatever class you may have that's only offered in standard, maybe trying to think a way of making an honors component with a little bit of extra work, whether that's done quarterly or at the end of the year as a roundup paper or something like that. Try to think about that as we move forward, because there's a lot of kids that don't want to take a standard level creative writing class because it's gonna fit with their GPA and it might not get them into national honors or whatever. And I, I, I know my child specifically would be like, you know, because she was the one that mentioned it, you know, just give me more work and I want to be, to be honors. So as you move forward, think that through, please.
Okay, yeah, no, definitely. So we're talking about differentiating the workload within the exact same block in order to keep that either standard or honors credit.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Just to give you something to think about. Thank you.
So Frank, if we go, we change the, the High School Foundations, can we just remove that last sentence? This is a four-credit pass/fail course. If we remove it, then it's assumed it's graded and it already, it already says four credits at the top. Would that work?
Yes.
And then on the other one, the first paragraph of the Advanced Placement Seminar, there's just two typos in it. I imagine it won't be copied and pasted directly, right? You'll, you'll get those?
No, we'll clean that up.
And course is in there twice.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
And the last page of the memo, is that something you need to go over this too?
Yeah, there, there's just one last piece for our Independent Studies. So our Independent Study Program is something that traditionally we used to offer to both eleventh and twelfth graders. I think it was about five years ago, we, we made it exclusively just for twelfth graders. I would like to open that back up again to our juniors as well. I think junior year, having a lot of our students met their graduation requirements through their freshman sophomore years or on the other side of the MCAS. I support our, our juniors as well as our seniors to, you know, explore that area of interest, that area of passion. You know, get approval for those independent studies where maybe they're studying for an AP test for something we might not necessarily offer at the high school or just that area where. for something we might not necessarily offer at the high school or just that area where they, they have that true passion, you know.
Wanting to approve this, then we're looking at the original language, going back to the course load, which we're taking it from thirty-two to sixteen?
Oh, the thirty-two would stay.
Same as sixteen rather than twenty, sorry.
Yep.
And then we have the AP seminar. High school foundation course with the edit of removing the pass fail course. And then also opening up independent study to eleven graders.
You want to try it? Alright, I move that we revise of the program of studies for ELHS. First, under required course load from students from the original language to the revised language that states all full-time students will be required to take thirty-two credits per year with at least sixteen credits selected from mathematics, science, English, social studies, or classical and modern language departments. In addition, we'd like to approve the high school foundations class that will be offered for grades nine and ten. And.
It was removing.
Oh, with, I'm sorry, with removing the final sentence that states this is a four-credit pass fail course. Like to approve the advanced placement seminar for grade ten with corrections to the spelling and some one words that needs to be removed. And also to include independent study revision to include both juniors and seniors with the language that has been provided.
Motion made by Beth. Kathy, are you okay with that? Motion made by Beth.
Second.
I need further discussion.
I'm just happy capstone could be a thing someday that you guys are starting with this and that the juniors get the opportunity for independent study, cause that should have never been gone in the first place. That was a fight. Remember?
If all was in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close name and that motion carries back zero. Thank you Frank.
Alright, thank you so much guys. And I've already made the changes in the document for the corrections and the, the updates in the language under the high school foundations course. So we're good to go. So thank you very much.
And the weighted, don't forget the weighted.
Yep.
Really do.
And, and that's just an easy addition to the program of studies that I think will just be a benefit for all students. There, there's a number of pieces of information that we're looking to add into the program of studies going into next year. That'll just be helpful for students and families to navigate our different departments.
Now you are gonna update us as well as it relates to some scheduling that you're looking to or that you're adjusting for next year?
Yeah, yeah. So I, I just wanted to take an opportunity to talk to the committee. And outline some changes that we're looking to make with how we run our, basically our bell schedule going into next year and shifting back away from the block into a full-year courses. So Ms. Brown, if you could just go to that next slide. So just kind of give some history. Back in two thousand sixteen, we did adjust our schedule where about sixty-five to seventy percent of our courses in the building ran on a full-year schedule structure. So prior to the pandemic heading, hitting in the spring of two thousand twenty, we did run the majority of the courses at Easton Meadow High School on a full-year schedule. When the pandemic did hit, we adjusted our schedule. And we simplified it, just not knowing what the, what the uncertainty was going to bring. So going into, going through last year, obviously with hybrid learning, synchronous learning and all the obstacles that we faced, block scheduling was definitely the right schedule to have during that, we'll say, for lack of a better term, during the chaos of, of that school year. This year is obviously had its challenges as well as we've dealt with different aspects of the pandemic. But you know, I, I'm pretty confident at this point. I'll say I'm very confident that we are going to remain open for in-person learning for the foreseeable future. And with that, I do see the value and the real need to return to full-year programming. So I'm looking to implement that for the year of twenty-two, twenty-three, which is going to be this, starting in the September. So Ms. Brown, if you could jump to the next slide, I'll outline just briefly just some of the, the rationale for us why we're, we're looking to return back to full-year programming. You know, starting right off the top, so students have more time to learn new material. When I'm talking about time, I'm talking about the number of weeks and months that they navigate through a course. So it's not that condensed timeline of September through January or January through June. So this is great for classes like math and in our foreign languages. It's not just those courses, but obviously those are ones that do, do pay huge dividends. So we're looking at courses where the skills build on one another and students need time to practice, consider the material before proceeding to the next step. So we really have that assimilation time slowed down and spread out for our kids. Also, students are going to have more courses, I'm sorry, more classes per course over the course of the year as results, results of shortened periods. So longer periods lead to less classes in a given course. In this proposal, students are going to have each class that they take approximately one hundred thirty-five times per course versus our current schedule, which offers approximately ninety classes per course. And it's usually a little bit less due to things like half days. Students are going to have gaps in their learning for courses like our sequential classes. You know, so for things like some of our math courses, our history courses, foreign languages, the ones that are tiered and they build on, on each other, they will not have that gap outside of the summer. And a full-year rotating schedule also allows for more balanced and accessible scheduling approach for all students. So the schedule that we're looking to roll out, where all classes are running on that full-year model is different than the one that we had two years ago, where that was a combination of semester-based and full-year courses. And there were a number of challenges that went along with that, just because we were trying to literally lay three schedules on top of each other. There was a first semester, second semester and then the full year. And there was definitely some issues with consistency and flexibility that we're, we're trying to move past. Other rationales, full-year rotating schedule allows for more equitable support programming for struggling students. So it makes sure that those supports are in place for the entire year instead of making those adjustments from one semester to the next. It also allows us to create teams of teachers and support staff at different grade levels for identified students. You know, if we're looking at those freshman sophomore years, the focus there is going to be on skill intervention, MCAST support, transition programming. High school foundations would be like a course that might play into that. Junior and senior support will focus on at rest students and credit recovery where applicable. Obviously, we are going to continue with our programming as we're required for our special education students who need those academic support services and those programs would still run full year. A full-year rotating schedule also allows us to build more targeted collaborative time for our staff and their schedules, which is both a district and school committee smart goal. And this, this is, you know, just, it's a small one, but it's an added bonus. There's less instructional time lost for individual classes as a result of days off, including days off for weather or if a kid is sick. Alright, next slide. So this is just an overview of what the bell schedule would look like. We do have eight scheduling blocks. You know, so we're not completely overhauling all of our graduation requirements. We are working with those eight scheduling blocks that we've been running for the last twenty-five years, which actually goes back to transition that took place when I was a sophomore at Easton Meadow High School, when we switched to the block schedule and we started taking it courses at a time. So the schedule I'm proposing is a, or I'm looking to implement is a, what we call a six drop two. It's where kids take six, six courses over the course of the day and two drop. You can see the blocks that are dropping on each of the outlined days at the bottom of the page. One, one drop blocks from the morning rotation and one block drops from the afternoon rotation. Next slide. So just kind of give an overview of this. So the classes that are going to be running on a daily basis are going to be fifty-five minutes of length. Looking back on that previous slide, you, you can see how four out of the eight blocks are locked in in terms of the times that they run just for consistency and I, easier to navigate when it comes to staff and students. For the blocks, you're going to have limited rotations. So they'll only move within like a, a two-block time period. Blocks do move in alphabetical order. So the kids will know the order that the blocks are going to move in by just obviously knowing their alphabet. Minus the block that drops. They'll always have that. They'll know which, based on the day of the week, which ones are going to be dropping. It's listed right at the bottom there. The G and H afternoon blocks are, are going to be for our senior programming for things like internships, externships, dual enrollment, careers in education course, work-study programs like that. We are looking at a four-day rotation, not a five-day. So if you look at this two, this two-week rotation, you can see it's a one, two, three, four, one. The following week begins on day two, two, three, four, one, two. So with, with our eight scheduling blocks, a four-day rotation does work much, much nicer than a five-day. And there's a couple of reasons connected to that in terms of the logistical issues that would be caused on a Friday. I can outline those if you guys have those questions, but we are looking to go with that four-day rotation instead of locking in the days. Any questions so far? Cause I've kind of thrown out a lot.
Well, I have a question, but I have a question though. So week one is different than week two, their schedule?
Yeah, so, so it's a, it's a four-day rotation. It's not a five-day locked-in schedule. I would make sure both staff and students get that, that overview of what the year would be in terms of all those rotations of those blocks. I'd send out monthly rotations, weekly rotations, just so the kids know what those schedules would be. But if you go with a five-day with our thirty-two, our thirty-two credit eight-block structure, what you would need is thirty-two scheduling blocks over the course of five days in order to get all of those blocks in. The issue being is if we go with those six, six blocks that are fifty-five minutes long, you only get thirty blocks in a five-day rotation. So every, every week we'd be two blocks short, which would, would cause some confusion and issues with consistency. One thing we did play out was what, if you look at what Long Meadow High School does and they run a very similar schedule, is they run a eight-day rotation and every Friday it could be any of those, one of those, one of those eight days. And my understanding is that, that those Friday schedules can get a little confusing and it also throws off planning and preparation for commonly taught classes. Like you might find in your math, your English or your science courses. So I am trying to avoid some of those issues that may, we might run into on Fridays.
Students had historically done like an A and B schedule anyways, right? I don't know if they're doing it now, but the last few years.
Yep.
But they know that it, it switches constantly.
Yeah, yeah.
This is far better than that waterfall schedule was painful to look at. So this is better.
So I will say, if you look at that previous slide, I don't know if Heather can jump back to it. We did lock in some of the blocks, so four out of the eight in there. So like A, D, E and H are all locked in in terms of their time. So if you know you have that block, you're always going to know what time it's at. The other ones fluctuate only one block up or down. So I did take the waterfall out. One, it helps with our senior programming and two, this has more of a, a logical progression and consistency for the kids and staff. So everything's alphabetical except for the one that drops.
You don't find that by reducing the length of classes, and I, I know why you're doing the, the full year, I understand it. But you know, you say you're going from a hundred and, from ninety classes to a hundred and thirty classes. But those ninety classes, obviously, just so the world knows, were, you know, fifty-five minute classes. They were longer classes. Now, in terms of like, the kids are coming in, they're getting settled in, they're sitting down, they're packing up, they're getting ready to go. You don't feel like you're going to lose a lot of time at the beginning and end of a class that's half as long, you know, in terms of time on learning. You know, they're, they're coming in, they're talking, they're chit-chatting, they're sitting down. They're going to do that a hundred and thirty times instead of twenty. You know, do, do you find that they, you know, when you did the full-year classes, that they, the teacher were able to get them on task and set down and to get their stuff done?
I, I believe so. I know the, the typical projected time that a lot of high schools target for block length is anywhere from fifty to sixty minutes. Like I said, Long Meadow is running a structure just like this where their blocks are fifty-six minutes long. They make it work. I will say when we used to have that old schedule where it was forty, forty, eighty-four, our teachers told us those forty-minute ones were just a little too short. So hope, our hope is you know, getting those additional fifteen minutes in there. I think obviously you're going to have to be a little efficient with that time. Like you can't have ten to fifteen minutes of downtime at the beginning of every block, you know, which I would not expect anyway. But you know, it does require a level of efficiency to make sure you get to what you want to cover. Ms. Brown, if we just jump to the next one. So the next few slides, I don't have to go through all of these in detail, but it just shows you what a freshman, if you want to jump to the next one, a sophomore schedule, a junior schedule and a senior schedule might look like. And on the last slide, if you jump to one more, Ms. Brown, it also shows how work-study might be structured during the time that a, a student might be, you know, leaving us to go engage in a work-study program or if that's dual enrollment program, externship, careers in education at one of our elementary schools. That would be the time allotted to, to those times in the yellow block at the bottom. And then if we could jump down one more. So these are just some of the things that we had to consider when we were building our schedule. So we did have to make sure that we had half-day scheduling structure. You know, that does allow us to continue to meet the needs of our CTEC students. If you look at any of these seven LPVAC schools, they all have schedules that allow for their students to leave half-day. So they can engage in their CTEC programs. So if you look at Long Meadow High School, Minnetoga, Southwick, Agawam, like all of those districts, they, they have structures in their schedule that allows their kids to leave half-day. So they all run variations of that morning and afternoon rotations for their kids. Currently, Easton Meadow High School, our students need a hundred and twelve credits in order to graduate out of a hundred and twenty-eight. With ninety-two of those credits from, coming from required course work in all departments. I'm not looking to change that. So this schedule isn't going to impact any of our graduation requirements. As I noted earlier, Long Meadow has a very similar schedule to the one being proposed where they run four, four blocks or one drops in the morning. And with the same four, but one of those drops in the afternoon. So it's that six-drop two in Long Meadow as well. I have had a conversation with the principal about that in terms of how it works, you know, and I've gotten some feedback from him in terms of how they run some of their, their different offerings. And, and again, so obviously with what we're looking to propose here, we have been running our Spartan support block throughout the pandemic. We are transitioning away from that. But we're going to have support provided to our students in different ways. Like we talked about with some of our specialized students, they'll still have their academic support blocks offered to them, you know, if it's designated or IEP, things like that. So so I just did want to make note that even we are transitioning away from that, but we do have, you know, structures in place to make sure kids get support where needed. And then Ms. Brown, our last slide here. So this is just a little bit of timeline in terms of how I went through the, the building of this, of the schedule over the, over the course of the year. I did have some numerous conversations with ELA, with our building officers and the union president. Just to talk out contractual, contractual implications for any changes we might make and make sure that I, I met the letter of our contract. I also reviewed my initial proposed schedule with our staff back on October fifth. I will say the one that we are looking to go with now is very different from that based on, you know, a lot of their feedback in terms of things that we had to consider. You know, pluses and minuses. So I, I do see, you know, a compromise here in terms of, you know, meeting the needs of, of our staff and students. So in December, I did make those adjustments and we shared that out with the staff and got some feedback. When we got into February, that's the, when I, I did share this with our school council and, and received feedback from the thirty members of our school council, which consists of both staff, students and parents. And then I also shared out the schedule with our, our families in February as well, soliciting their feedback via Google Form, which helped me set up the FAQ document that I've been pushing out the last few weeks through my weekly update as students have begun their scheduling process, which brings us to now where we started our, our scheduling for our students for the upcoming school year. So it's kind of just a quick snapshot of what's been going on this year and getting ready for the return to full-year. So it's kind of just a quick snapshot of what's been going on this year and getting ready for the return to full year programming at East Long Meadow High School. And if you guys have any questions or you want to. Express anything.
We we've talked and you know, I'm happy with, you know, I understand why you're doing what you're doing, I know you need to, you have to do. But since two thousand and the graduating class of two thousand and sixteen, they're not. One graduating class has had a consistent schedule for four years. COVID put a kibosh on that moment in time where you were actually going to have that first year happen, and I know that. And I just want you to be cognizant, I know the kids from twenty twenty two are all done and you know, but they never had four consistent years. The class of twenty twenty three is not going to have four consistent years, this is going to be their fourth schedule in four years. And I just, as a parent, it's frustrating. And I'm sure as a student, because it's very difficult to plan your future and to plan what you're going to be doing, and it's unprecedented, and we're all going to live through it, but. I want, just as you're scheduling these kids, especially the the rising, you know, seniors and juniors. Be very cognizant, please, of what you're offering and what they're getting and and they really need to make sure that they, I know you'll do it, but they need to make sure that they get what they need. Because whatever they thought they were going to get in the eighth grade when they sat down and they took the pen to paper and you plan out your four years, like the world's going to happen the way it wants to be. It imploded. I know you'll do it, I just want you to do it. And my other comment would be, I am extremely excited about C tech. I am. And for those who out there that don't realize that C tech is basically a trade school, for lack of a better term. Our students can learn anything from. Machining to computer science things to auto mechanic woodworking, you name it, they can do it. We've never utilized that program. Our schedule is very difficult for the kids to utilize that program. And the fact that this schedule. I, you know, I'm cognizant of the fact that the schedule helps them get what they need, and I think the one thing that people just need to really understand with C tech is. It's not for stupid kids, these kids are, these kids are preparing for college. They're college ready when they come out of C tech. And I think sometimes it gets a bad rap, and I think that in today's day and age is very important that. Moving forward that we understand the importance of C tech. Programming, I know kids who've graduated from colleges after going through C tech and they're doing phenomenal, and some of them don't. And they're making some nice money when they graduate, so I I see that that's impactful in terms of those students, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, if I can just piggyback on what you're saying there, Ms. voucher. So obviously, I come from a family of plumbers, so I fully value the trades and understand, you know, what they bring to us and. My dad and my brother are two of the smartest guys I know, you know, so I totally get what you're saying. But I will say, if you're if we're talking a little bit about our C tech program, I do have to give a shout out to Mr. Wright in our guidance department in terms of how they mapped out. The the C tech equivalencies and some some of the modifications of our graduation requirements to make sure that more kids can start taking. Part in the C tech program coming in as freshmen. So we even have developed a. A track for students where if they're looking to go right into that career or that field right out of high school, the courses that they would take. But we also have a a track for kids and the courses they would take with us to prepare them for a four year college as well, you know, so C tech doesn't necessarily mean that you're just going into the trades. It also, we can make sure that you can get that skill and at the same time be prepared to go to a four year school. So. So I fully agree with exactly what you're saying here, that, you know, it's not. Just for the kids who are looking to go into the trades, but you can also go through C tech and go to a four year school. What's very cool, I think, we typically average about five to seven kids in any given year per grade who might be going to C tech, some years it bumps up to ten. With some of the work we've been doing, we actually have nineteen kids who have signed up in the eighth grade. Looking to go into C tech as freshmen, so we've we've more than doubled what we typically enroll over there, which I think is awesome.
Well, that speaks to the fact that chapter seventy four, which governs collaboratives and career and technical education. Changed their requirements as well.
Yes, they did.
You can't go in in the tenth grade anymore as tenth graders and get the necessary credits. To graduate from C tech, it has to start, they wanted to increase enrollment across the state, so they changed the requirements and now admit ninth graders into the program.
Um, one other question, will the kids still be able to participate in sports? I know sometimes that's difficult for the kids, are we going to make accommodations for those kids that like maybe want to try to get back in time to do a sport?
Yeah, we we always, we've done our best to make sure that those kids are able to participate. And Mr. McGee's been awesome, we're trying to move those practice times a little bit later, so one, students can engage in extra help if needed between. Forty five and two forty five, so a lot of our. Sports teams are pushing towards three o'clock or later practice start. We do sometimes some of our freshman programs do start a little bit earlier, but for the most part, we try to start closer to three. Which which allows for our afternoon C tech students to get back to the school off the bus and participate in those programs.
Thank you.
A work in progress.
Yeah, yeah, no, it sounds good. I'm still not happy it's four, four schedules in four years for my kid though.
Understand, I do.
Mr. Page, is there any other questions for?
I think that you did a really nice job thinking the schedule out, because I feel like you tried to include all stakeholders and what would benefit everyone. And you also got a lot of input from 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 a lot of other people too. So I hope that this. Hopefully, this will be successful and they won't have to change it anymore.
Right, would be nice.
Yeah, that's that's the hope, and I will say, the feedback that we got definitely led to, I think, what's going to be a great schedule for our kids.
You can tell that you put a lot of work into it, so.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update, and thanks for taking the time to bring this to us, even though. Didn't necessarily have to, we appreciate being one of the stakeholders that you kept. Praise to the changes.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you guys for your time tonight, both with the program of studies and the schedule, I always appreciate you guys.
Does the schedule not require a vote?
That's my knowledge.
Yeah, the program of studies required a vote because you're revising it and you're adding courses. The schedule does not change graduation requirements. So it's it does not require a vote. Nor does it impact contractual requirements, which is one of the things that Mr. Page had mentioned as he was seeking feedback.
Right.
So no vote nor negotiations.
Right. We have a brick now.
In your packet, you will see that we are requesting the school committee approve a hundred dollar gift to this high school gift account. For the purchase of a brick for the Spartan walkway, and this is from Brent, forgive me if I mispronounced your name, Gowerly, class of nineteen sixty four.
Worth motion for that one?
Move to approve the. Hundred dollar donation for an engraved brick in Spartan Walkway from Brent Gowerly.
Motion made by Beth.
No second.
Second by Bill, any further discussion?
Just other one, want to say that he's from the class of nineteen sixty four and is in the US Army.
All those in favor, please say aye. And Heather, I believe you're still with us, right? I am. Hi, Heather was going to provide us with an update on. Curriculum instruction and assessment as to where we are right now.
Um, hello, everyone. I wanted to start with MCAS, the MCAS schedule is here, the schools have been communicating this with. Students and families, but it's all here in one place. For the elementary and middle schools, they get a kind of a window of time, and then for the high school, it's set dates. And where it says STE, it's the science and technology for the high school, that's the biology test. And so because they're still in the half year. Schedule, some of our students have already taken the biology tests and then some of the kids who are taking it this semester will take it in June. Any questions about the MCAS schedule?
Ask the watch the kids as they begin.
Yes.
And then the other updates I have are around the different curriculum committees that are happening. And just to remind folks that Desi has provided a process. And a lot of professional development to folks who are facilitating this process, which has been really helpful. But the entire process is is professional development. And the first stage is the learn and prepare stage where folks. Are just making sure that they really understand what it means to have, what what high quality instructional materials. Are making sure that we're all really aware of standard alignment. We look at ed reports, we look at the curate, both are, the ed reports is an independent organization that actually. Brings in teams of teachers and other experts to review curriculum using a whole process. And then Curie is the Department of Ed's own process, which is pretty much, they they will only look at things that have already been. Considered high quality from ed reports, but they have their own other things that they're looking for in addition. And so with the different groups, we've met as a multilingual learner. Group, that's the same as English language learners, but multilingual learners kind of has a more of a asset based. So it's the the language that more and more folks are using. And so we've been diving into the new WITA standards, which are the. The English language learners standards that Desi follows. And have worked on creating our our vision statement and we are beginning the investigate and select process. And this is a little bit more sped up than the other groups, because there's only a few folks in this team, so we're able to kind of get through things pretty quickly and we. Have been aware that we wanted something more aligned for a while, so it's not as much as trying to get people on the same page. As it has been, for example, for the K to five curriculum committee, which I'm excited to say. The last couple of meetings, we've really started to see where we have a lot of common ground and have been able to. Put that forward and different vision statements that we then revised and I just sent them out today to the. To the all the elementary teachers, so they could give their feedback as well. But it's just really exciting as we kind of look at our different philosophies and and really see where things are intersected in terms of wanting the best for kids. So this process is is still ongoing, but we are moving into the investigate and select very soon, which is exciting. People really want to get their hands on all the curricular materials, we have digital samples and we have. Boxes and boxes of physical samples in central office, waiting to be, waiting to be examined. And then finally, the high school math committee, we just found out that we got the accelerating math. Grant from Desi, it's not exactly a grant, because what what it does is. They approve a certain amount of funds for you and then you send them the invoices directly. And then they pay for everything, which is a much more convenient process than others, but we didn't want to promise anything to the high school. Math department until we knew we had that funding, so this is again, a little bit more sped up as well, but they did start this process. On their own in the beginning of the year, when they started looking at their own curriculum and the materials that they're using and how those fared on ed reports. And how well they align to the Common Core State Standards, and we realized that we really are in the need for something. Better aligned. And that is considered higher quality, so we, so that the teachers don't have to supplement as much and. So that we can really spend our time instead of curating materials, really planning for instruction. So this process is ongoing and we'll need to. Bring forth whatever their selection is to you, like the K to five curriculum committee before we order anything. At the end of the school year. Those are the three that I have to report on, if folks have any questions.
Have the. You have a schedule where we order textbooks and that kind of stuff, is this falling under that from you, because you don't really get textbooks necessarily anymore? Are we so young enough, because I was out here and then I'm back and I just wondering?
So basically, this is taking our process and enhancing it. And so it, you know, it, all the things that we have and all the the forms that we have are incorporated in this. Although I have been looking at them and seeing where I can make them even more aligned, so it's are the process that we have plus more. It's really about getting everyone on the same page and having that buy in, so when you do. You know, actually select curriculum, folks have all feel like they have. A stake in it, and it's harder when, you know, you're dealing with, for example, all the elementary teachers, you just, it's not like it's department heads, it's a lot of folks. So the process is just slowed down to make sure that those voices are part of the process. And it's great, I'm glad that Desi has recognized that that is a really important piece of it, as well as. Once you've selected the materials that you're not done, that there's a whole launch that you need to worry about and, you know, how are you going to implement things? What things need to be in place, what professional development needs to happen and what needs to be ongoing? And then that monitoring piece where, you know, once we have the curriculum in place, doesn't mean everything is great, we need to continue to look at, see, you know, how are things are going? What are some tweaks we need to make? As we look, go through cycles of looking at data, so it's just an enhanced process.
Thank you.
Appreciate the time that goes into this and appreciate you being able to leverage Desi. Not only as a partner in terms of seeking out great opportunities, but also in terms of. Looking to the process that they put forth and using it here in our community to ensure that we're selecting high quality research based materials to put in front of the students, so. Thank you for that, because it's definitely shifted over time and it's important to ensure that our educators and our students have access to those types of materials.
Thank you, and I, you know, I also want to shout out the administrators and the and the teachers who are involved in this work, because. They're spending after school hours doing this with me and we couldn't do it without them, so. Thank you.
Next up is. Two more times mid cycle from last time, so we just need to approve it.
Move to approve the superintendent's mid cycle review. As presented.
Made by Bill, second by Beth. Any further discussion? Please say aye. Last, we are looking to shift the school building committee. So please nominate Mr. Thompson. School building committee.
Okay, I nominate to have, sorry, Greg Thompson. The building school committee to replace Antonella.
Motion made by Beth, second. Any further discussion? Thank you, Antonella, for the time you did serve, and thank you, Greg, for, you know, from here.
Yeah.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, close nay, and that motion carries by zero. For tonight, thank you, Dawn, for being here with us and to all of the members of the administrative team and. Central office joined, thanks Kathy for taking notes. And that.
Move to adjourn.
Made by, right?
I'll second.
By that, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay, and that motion carries by zero, thank you, everybody.